Let's call the July 17th meeting of the Gateway, CDN and Gateway Relations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call, let the record show that Paul, Board Chairman, President, our Chairperson who will be here shortly, get his, you're out of the ring. Approval of final job down. Any additional changes or we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Come in, come in, tell me anything we have.
I have two. I had. Oh, I had two.
Did you get yours in?
I asked you.
I turned to my.
I have an agenda and two non-agenda, it doesn't matter. First one is Tom Murphy, regarding, from Stony Brook, regarding Agenda Item 11A, reminder you have three minutes.
And I'll be short and sweet, we have.
Please announce yourself.
My name is Tom Murphy, I represent Stony Brook. We're here on Item 11A, Agenda Item 11A, requesting relief from the availability fees that have been attached to two properties. One is a property B which has zero egress for anybody to get to, it's surrounded by homeowner properties, so nobody can get through that. It seems logical to me, and a simple thing, that you would just, you know, you wouldn't look to charge at some availability fee. The other property, which I'm sure you're familiar with, is the one that's across the street, I think it's B14. And at one point, I think the association, before I was on it, was going to give it to you guys, and it didn't get voted in favor of that. But that property is outside of our community, as you know. It is a kind of disjunctive sort of property, it abuts the landfill and a preserve, and it's not going to be developed, not at least by the association. And we would request, respectfully of course, that, you know, those fees that were going to be charged, which on both of those properties totaled about 1,700 bucks in a year, be waived. And I believe that I submitted, it should be in your packet, I submitted my request in writing, so that you could consider it. That's why I'm here, and I would hope that you would vote in favor of us, and that's all I have.
Tom, is this is the property that's basically is the buffer between the houses and Gateway Boulevard?
Correct.
And it's a long, linear deal that wraps around the lakes?
Undeveloped.
And comes to undeveloped?
It's.
And I don't know how this difference could ever be developed.
Yeah.
What I'm worried about is, is that, do we have this, Tony, in other places, and why would we have an availability fee that we want to assess? Properties that are not available?
They are not available.
And I can see an unavailability fee, but not an availability fee. How did this ever happen?
If I recall correctly, I can be corrected, I thought we had a good discussion a couple times at board meetings, where the items came up, and we had various parcels and tracks to identify the ones that we thought, that's my recollection, so, unless they had done a comprehensive analysis of the parcels that we thought would be appropriate for the availability fee, and Tom brought that to the board.
We did.
I think we had tracks identifying maps and graphics too.
I think we identified a couple, we just never actions to remove them from the fee structure.
I'm all for availability fees where there's availability, but just to generate revenue, I don't, I don't think that's.
So there is a, I don't know if you want to address this now, or if you want to wait for the agenda later?
I don't know.
Just for the.
We understand what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, Flavia is on, she can't join teams because of traffic, but she's here, you need to.
Hi Flavia.
Make a motion. Aye.
I should begin in five minutes or so.
Who's that?
Give them a motion for pardon. Our second one is Sherry Schiller, regarding soccer fields, AstroTurf versus pond, medical. Please state your name for the record, and then you got three minutes.
Sherry Schiller, and this is a little out of order, I heard you talking about the soccer fields. I have some information from my previous life, I'm now just a grandma who volunteers with children, and I'm a child advocate. And I'd like to talk about the difference between artificial turf versus natural grass. It's considered detrimental to children to be repetitively playing on artificial turf. It's considered really bad in their joints, in their breathing systems, and many other things as they grow. The latest information is, it is 100% better for the children to be on natural turf. Now, get bids, anybody that has an artificial turf company is going to tell you how great it is, and when you get bids for grass, anybody? So my suggestion is, Mr. Banks, you had a good idea, when you said your children use the soccer fields over by Jet Blue, those are working, they're using grass over there, and they last, and they work. So why not look at what they're using, what type of grass, what type of lawn, will it work here? Or if not that, what would? Because I really feel that for the children's growth and well-being, it's not good to put artificial, and have their little joints and big joints pounding on that stuff. It's, it's not done very much anymore. It's old school, because of the long-term effects. But that's just my grandma, and I advocate for children, and I don't own any companies, and I'm not going to make money on it, so that's just for my two cents, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Alright, finally we have Rod Senior with a non-agenda. Right here, three minutes.
Don't start yet, please.
I won't tell you.
I'm contending with all this noise out there. Very nice, thank you for that. My item is.
Please just announce yourself.
Rod Senior, Gateway Greets. My item is soccer fields. Annual O&amp;M is $485,000. AstroTurf and floodlights together is likely to cost around $5 million. Spread over 15 years at 6%, that's half a million dollars a year in debt service. It might not be 6%, I don't know what you guys might get up with the bond, but that's ballpark. So the total tax burden on the Gateway and Pelican Preserve residents, now you're paying, is going on to a million bucks a year, if we go ahead with this. Consider the economics for the users of these fields, for prominent users being flag football and the Gateway Soccer Association. Gateway Soccer Association have got 800 players, or at least they used to when I was on the board a few years ago. 800 players, half of which don't live in Gateway, they pay $350 a year per child, two seasons. So $350 times 800 is $280,000 revenue going into the GSA. And the rent that GSA pays to CDD is, was $32,000, I'm guessing it's maybe $50,000, we're not sure at this point. Kids are sponsored, totally, they have to pay for some officials and some referees, but that being said, it's a tidy money earner for a private entity like that. It's lopsided arrangement, because we taxpayers are holding the cost then. It's not that the families aren't paying enough for soccer, the problem is that the revenue generated from the operations is not going into our cash register, but it's going into the cash register of the users. So GSA becomes a transparent cost center, while the users are an opaque privately held profit center. Doug, I'm trying my hardest to support your ongoing initiative to promote family sports in Gateway, I really am. But there has to be a breaking point in terms of how much money we can spend to support it. Same goes for the new park at the Gateway Commons. I'm not sure security or O&amp;M costs have really been considered too much at this point. Here's my suggestions, establish a more transparent relationship with the principal users, where we can openly share costs and revenue data. Review our field sports policy, can we introduce a wider array of sports, including baseball, lacrosse, football, and soccer, which is fairer? Next, focus our investment now on Gateway Commons, 20 acres, with new add building and the Phase 1 Park, this might be a good time to move our field sports operations there. In a scaled down manner, that would bring down the huge annual cost hurdle that the staff is struggling to match with rental income. It would also allow us to retire the existing soccer fields and repurpose them to render them, render a big financial win, without losing our existing sports programs. Sherman's legacy could be honored in some way by erecting a plaque or a bench.
I love.
Please let's think outside the box, before rushing into a capital decision on floodlights and AstroTurf that we will be saddled with for 15 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other comment on this?
Anything online?
No, Beth and I don't have any emails to read.
Any local achievements or recognition?
Yes, if she were here today, like we, like what we did with Julie, we'd be celebrating Elle's retirement, she's been with the district 18 years, she was hired March 8th, 2007. Her last day with the district.
July 31st.
Is July 31st. We do intend on having a small celebration here, with staff and a small luncheon. But we wish her nothing but the best on her next chapter in life, and I know she's already got plans to travel, and go do a couple things that are on her bucket list. So we really appreciate everything that she's brought to the districts over her years, I know she's seen a lot, come and go, staffing, you know, she really watched this place grow, Gateway grow, build over time, so I just want to mention that to you.
31st?
Sure, 31st of this month, yeah.
Is that when the party or goodbye or whatever it's going to be?
Yeah.
So we want to copy. Anything else?
Do you have the?
I don't have an actual email, I know that I got a, I got a text message from Angelo earlier today. There was a landscaping issue with a large branch that was in a place that he was having a hard time figuring out how to get it cut down. Isaac actually brought it to Angelo's attention, and Isaac took it upon himself to go out and help Angelo cut it down, so we had some cross, cross department cooperation. So I think it's great that staff called out a recognition, on other staff, we don't usually get that at the, at the field level, so I wanted to make sure that I called it out. Angelo wanted to make sure that he gave a kudos to Isaac for going out of his way to help him take care of that branch issue today.
That surprised me with Isaac.
No, but I mean, we don't normally get, we don't normally get staff recognizing other staff, so I wanted to make sure I called that out, besides Chelsea and I.
Thank you. Vicesay Committee items, reports, anything here?
If anybody has any questions about these reports?
Move to exception report.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you. Approval of minutes, any minutes, anybody wants to pull or any questions? Motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
I'm making, I was asking, you make the, you make the motion to approve, you'll send it, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent Agenda Items, any on here to be pulled, most of them are Pelican Preserve, so I'll look at it at you guys, with the exception of one of them.
Move on Agenda Items 9, A, B, C, and D.
I don't want to pull B, but I do have a question on that.
Yeah, I had.
I understand what we're doing, because I'm doing the same thing, but how is the guy signing off on property he doesn't own? I understand the, what do you call it, the monuments, the stone, stowards, that's on his yard.
Yeah.
But one of those, two of those, aren't even on his property, are we, who's signing off, are we the board signing off that we consent to that on the ones that are on our property?
It's, that's your call.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that's what we were doing.
I guess, I guess the question is from this, it doesn't show, it doesn't show that the, well.
Go to exhibit C.
Yeah, I'm looking at the exhibit, I'm looking at the survey.
Can you pull that up?
Yeah, I'm looking at the.
Property survey.
All County Surveyor Surveyor, and which portion are you talking to, are you talking on the west side?
West side, yeah.
The west side indicates that's a water management track.
That's my point, yeah, it's ours, that's why I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we're going to be doing that in a couple of other places, I just want to make sure what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Yeah, no, we're allowing those to be on the district's water management track.
Correct.
Okay.
What we're doing by this, and I don't have any problem with it, I think it makes sense, the issue is, I just don't want to come back and have this be problematic on another deal where it may not be as clear, because this thing's 17 feet out into a 20-foot LME. But I don't have any problem with it, I just want to make sure I understood, because the property owner is signing this, and he's the only one, what I'm doing over at Gateway is I'm signing it along with the property owner.
Correct.
For the gateway, because it's on ours, yes, so, okay.
So if you approve this, then we're granting consent to, for them to keep the planters within that water management.
Within the water management, as well as this utilities from up front, and then there's the, is that our?
Yeah, I didn't, I, yeah, I just was trying to figure out, is that, are we accepting his signature for something that he doesn't own? Because that's not his property that he's signing for right there.
No, we're allowing him to encroach into the two.
We're allowing him to.
Utilities from up front, and the water management is from up there.
I take it by our acceptance of this, we're consenting with that.
The other agreement provides.
Flavia has a question before, go ahead, Flavia.
So, trying to look at a survey on the park, but how, I remember visiting a location, I was concerned about two of the planters, because they're really, really, really close to the pond, like, did we, has Tetra Tech said anything regarding how close they are? Because they, they look fairly new, I don't think that's something that it was there for a long time, so.
Tetra Tech?
Do they have, do they have any concerns about how close, like, the two, I don't know, they're much closer to the pond?
So Tetra Tech reviewed those as part of the construction of that pond that we just completed, and the contractor and Tetra Tech had no concerns at the time, because they were able to work around it, so. That's kind of the stance that we took, if the contractor is able to mobilize around it and do the complete reconstruction, then, you know, it's.
That was my impression at the very beginning, that they could work around it.
Yeah.
There was a side issue, not a pole issue.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's the other thing I wanted to make sure, is that we were accepting this with the knowledge that we got the planters in our.
That's exactly right, and again, and looking at the form of the documents, let me go back to, the actual easement agreement, easement use agreement itself, says we can, if it's in our way, we can have them remove it or remove it ourselves.
In the future.
In the future, that's right. He said in paragraph 3, he asked to remove it upon our written request, and so cost expense, and if he doesn't, we'd kind of like to do that.
So we have to wait that?
Oh, no, in the future.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent Agenda Items A through D, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, I go.
Alright, Tetra Tech update.
District engineer, who we got on board?
Steven. Hey, good afternoon, everyone, Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer, can you all hear me okay today?
Yeah, is it storming down there at your place?
It just stopped raining, and I can hear thunder in the, over the microphone on your end, so you guys must be getting the brunt of it.
Yeah, it's coming through the door.
Yeah, it's near the house microphone.
Yeah, go ahead. Steven, just one second, I'm coming, Doug just left, but I just wanted to point out to the board, that consent items C and D both resulted in cost reductions.
Say it again.
It's the two consent items, for the conservation areas, we redid those, and our aeration and fountain mainus, both of those, the new bids are less than the return fee. And that's the trench you want to avoid, not the automatic inflation. I'm sorry, I see.
Let the record show that Flavia is, you're officially now.
Go ahead, Steven.
By split it, like by, totally.
There you go, Doug.
Alright, good to go?
Yeah.
Alrighty, irrigation pump station generator, our contractor mobilized to the site on Monday, they've got locates in, we had our first progress meeting on site this week, and they started some minor construction work, they started with trench excavation, the generator is on site, and their, their schedule goes through September right now to get that project completed, the installation of that standby emergency generator for the irrigation pump station. The irrigation enforcement improvements project, we're just waiting for all of our funding agencies to come through with their reviews, to let us know what money we have to work with. Lower Hawthorne Well, that project is getting close to the end, we're scheduling a startup of the well, there's some minor restoration work that is left to be done on that project. The Gateway Utility Storage Building, contractor has to complete some items, including restoration, close out their building permit, and punch list items, and electrical. The Gateway Admin Building, OAK is working on the foundation, they're fighting weather currently, just trying to keep their trenches dry for the footings, they're also working on installing piping and conduit beneath the foundation. Earthwork, I believe is complete at the sports courts, and I think the next item over, you know, related to that would be the playground getting installed, which may have already happened, I think it's on site. Phase 2, your Lake Bank Restoration, these projects have been closed out, they just got added on here on accident, this was a draft, and there's some miscommunication between me and Eric before this got finalized and sent to the board for review, so my apologies there. FY24 Lakes Construction Management, that project, we're waiting on MRI to complete the punch list, they've notified us today that it is complete, so we're going to go out there and verify all those items are, have been addressed before we issue final. FY25 Lake Bank Construction Management, same story here, we're working through the punch list items on these four lakes, there are two additional lakes associated with this project that are on hold until the end of rainy season, which is TBD currently. Lake Bank Restoration HMGP, this is 21 lakes for the future, those are currently in preliminary design, we have surveyors out there right now, we're waiting to get our first batch of information from the surveyors to move forward with design. The Public Works Storage Building, we're starting surveying in Geotech, so that's pretty much where we're at there. This is the relocation site plan, I'm not sure why that one's on there, I think one of these TAs is associated with the parking lot expansion at the old Dog Park, which Chelsea has been patiently waiting for a change order from Eric, which we should have to her next week. It was comes parking admin building, we talked about that. FGUA, they have planned for a final walkthrough tomorrow, we've already done a walkthrough on all of our punch list items, so we think everything's complete on Gateway's end, we're just waiting for record drawings, and for them to complete the project on their end, some paperwork items. Lake 109 Golf Course, that one's been done for a while, CCTV Sewer, we've received 67% of the work that's been scheduled to be completed, that has been inspected, and we have reviewed it, so there's approximately 30% left of the sewer to be inspected and reviewed. CCTV Storm, the contractor's been a little slower, but they are working through it, we are waiting for our first deliverable to, to review. Boardwalk, that shouldn't be on there either, that's been completed, that's in Public Works hands now. Staff Gauge is a, another project with Public Works, and, you know, we've been assisting Paul and Stephanie on that, that's just to add staff gauges throughout the district, where, where the old ones are kind of worn out, need to be replaced, and where staff sees fit to add new ones. Miscellaneous GIS assistance, we are currently helping the district update their GIS for Public Works, Utilities, and General Assets. For the Public Works section, we're waiting on Passarella to complete their work, and then hand it off for us to incorporate Utilities, we're working through right now, along with General Items. Pelican Lakes 47 and 48, those are complete, and we, we approved a final payment on those, so those are going to get closed out before the next time we have a meeting, those look really good. Development Updates, Arborwood Phase 3, we're working through punch list on the stormwater side, we just sent them an updated list last week, so we're waiting for them to address all those comments. Daniels Parkway Apartments, we sent them our comments from the last submittal, and we're working through the well agreement and the upsizing agreement with legal, with Tony's help. Santa Luz, Tony and I were talking today, he was asking me for some information that is going to be useful to him, so I'm helping him through that, and maybe he has a better update on that one. Garrett FM, the potable water line has been flushed, pressure tested, and is currently undergoing back tea testing after being disinfected, so soon the potable line will be cleared, and as you can see, they're moving right along with vertical construction. Those are all the updates that I have, if anyone has any questions, be happy to answer.
Yeah, this is Bob, one question, the mill resurfaced for Pelican Reserve Boulevard from tree line to four-way stop, have we made progress on that, or we have to bid or engineering study, and will it include all the payment?
Yeah, Chelsea recently asked for a TA on that, so that's in our hands right now to provide a scope of services for her review.
It's a TA, that's going to have all the payment, everything that's required, okay.
And that'll be safety and security, mill and resurface, and then evaluating the curbing, because we want to touch that, and then that'll put safety and security, and then EPAC, and then.
So we go through the normal, it was on his list, that's why.
We're start, well, because we wanted to get their TA going now, so they could start the design work, and then bidding, and then by the time we actually get to construction, it'll be after Easter.
But we're hoping it's done next year.
Oh, it will, oh yeah, it will, yeah, that's why we started now, and that's why you also see on there, the pond 46 is then starting to draft the TA, until Ponce tells us otherwise. Anything else for Steven? Okay, thank you, Steven.
Alright guys, have a good night.
See you, stay dry.
Alright, so go ahead and move to Admin Agenda Items, you're going to go, I pick a landing.
Yep, so like Tom mentioned earlier, handful of months ago, we went through and upped, re-upped our utility rules, evaluated the availability fee as part of that, we identified a slew of parcels throughout the district that were being charged availability fees, weren't being charged availability fees, and then with that updated rule, we went in and we started charging everybody the availability fees for the BEAU, yes.
You adopted, the board adopted a policy?
Yes.
Okay, you had a rule, but not a policy.
Oh, policy, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, those are not revisions to the rule.
Yes, so it's about, I think for the two parcels, I think it's what, 200 bucks, or, yeah, so there are a handful of parcels that other HOAs are paying as well, but Stony Brook is looking for relief for these two, so we're looking to you to let us know what you want to do.
I just don't think this is right at all, if we made a mistake and overlooked it the last time, I think we ought to correct it, this should be waived, and any other community that is being assessed, availability, availability fees for unavailable property, to me, is ridiculous, we don't need that revenue, we don't need to do this to people, it's not right.
Okay, so how, how are we, I have a, I have a problem with both, one, I agree with you, and the other one I wouldn't. So B14 specifically, I wouldn't agree with waving, because it was just not long ago that their board didn't want to sign that over to us, because they were thinking about selling that property, so us.
But that's, but.
So that one I wouldn't.
Selling and developing.
But my question is, is it.
Selling to develop, that, you know, if they're selling, I mean, we don't know what the buyer is going to do.
There's my argument, is.
The one that's around the pond, I mean, clearly there's, you can't develop that, but B14, it's something that they were very vocal about it, we went through the whole process, we both parties spent money, we as a group spent money, they spent money, and at the end, they pulled out for that specific reason, because it was going to be at one point, looking to a dollar generating for that community if.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, so.
So then that, that eliminates the issue of it being not available, it is available.
B14.
That's, that's subjective. So it, what, I mean, whether it's developable, developable or not, that's subjective, or what their intention is, that piece of land has been vacant for 20, ever.
So from a staff perspective, the point of an availability fee is that if, if, we don't know, if anything ever is constructed there in the future, or if they want to put irrigation, even with whatever service, that the district has available water. irrigation even with whatever service, that the district has available waters that we can provide to that parcel. So they have the opportunity and the availability to tie into our system, correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct. There's a definition, I don't have a term of availability fee in the rules that says that the service is available to the parcel and this is part of the carrying cost of that top, maintain that particular line that's available for them to...
And obviously if they ever construct it, the availability fee would go away and they would pay their, their typical...
I don't have any trouble with any of that as long as it meets the smell test that it's available and it can be built on. That along there cannot be built on, there's no way.
So who makes that determination? From a staff perspective, that is where...
I think that if it, if that's, that's our board's decision, I have absolutely no problem of saying that, hey, and on my opinion, that is not developable.
What's the first one called?
There are two tracks, I believe.
Yeah, one of the two tracks.
B14.
I take a B14 on the west side of Stony Brook, B7 Boulevard.
B and B14.
B14 is on the west side of the road.
What's the other one?
B2?
Just B.
Oh, just B?
B2.
B2, I guess. B2 for me is an absolute number, right?
I agree totally.
B14?
I totally agree with that. B14, just because, and I tried to reach out to JT, but I know he's, he's out of the, he's not in town. And then I did look back at the meetings, it's actually when we had the both meetings here. Do you recall, do you recall that?
We're all sitting around the table here, I think.
Exactly, so that's, so that's the reason why I'm like, okay, now it, now it's not when they pictured it was.
What is B2 designated as? I know we don't...
I think it's landscape buffer, I believe, I meant it on the plat, it might be a buffer track. I believe that's where it's intended to be.
I could see going that we, we hold it as a gotcha and we collect it if and when it's ever built, if we think that's going to happen. But right now, collecting money on that, that hasn't happened and turning off there to create a developable, developable piece of property was slim and nut.
Well, you have to keep, keep in mind, I'm struggling, with developable and if we're talking available water, that's all we're concentrating, is that there's the availability...
What would it be available for if it's not developable?
If they choose to put a drinking fountain there, if they choose to put, so it is...
Let's do something that'll pass a smell test. That has to pass a smell test, not to the residents.
So what she's saying is the definition is at any point if water needed to be available, that's what the accessibility is.
I have them come back and pay them later.
I can only go back five years at that point.
I can't even with a straight face look at that piece of property as being developed or available for development.
Well, and again, recall, it's available for water, wastewater or irrigation and so if you have an area that's going to be irrigated, those are the lines that are available to that property to be connected to by the property and the fact that they don't choose to, there's still the cost, there's a cost to carry administrative costs, et cetera, for those lines we have to maintain. That's the rationale.
What was the dollar value annually? Thousand, four, six dollars for that?
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred. Seven, seventeen hundred.
Thousand and so...
Oh, B2's the whole thing.
I think it's total, yeah. It's between two and a half hundred dollars.
The two together are seventeen hundred.
You have B14 in there, Chelsea?
Yeah.
That's in there. Trying to retrieve. So you want to separate them?
I would, I would.
That sounds reasonable to me.
I mean, B2, I totally agree with that, I don't...
I agree with B2.
Even though I understand what Tony's saying, like if later on they want to put irrigation and there's, there's just all, all they needed it, but I'm willing to just...
And I, I see what you're saying. I would almost look, regardless of what Stony Brook said, why they didn't want to hand it over, not hand it over, they have, they think they're going to sell it, okay, whatever. But there's been nothing done, there is no projection of anything happening in the future. I would much rather just waive both of them and if there was, if they do sell the property, then we've got five years.
They've been telling you for years, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not going to...
I don't see why we'd not take B2, Eric. I'm going with more, TP17.
I'm just seeing, I'm just giving them the benefit of the doubt and I'm taking the word for it. They had a different board, they didn't have, you know, the area wasn't maintained, so I have to give them credit. So they changed a lot of things, they have a different vision and the vision that stands now, this was a very high possibility. I would have split those, B2, I would have definitely waived it, don't have a problem with, I don't think, and if they want to put irrigation, we just go back five years. For B14, it's, it's, it's questionable to me.
So from a staff, from a staff perspective, again, not being subjective, we're looking at the rule and what the rule says, staff would say, staff was recommending that you continue to assess availability fees. So that is looking...
I will make a motion to waive B2, assessment retained, B14.
And I'll second your motion. Go ahead and call for a vote. My favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Ayes.
All right. We will make those adjustments, point like...
I wouldn't say, let's look at any other community that's got something as ridiculous as B2 is.
Mainly to use access. If there is no access, that's like, that's a clear, you know, but let them come to us and...
And, and, and Tom said, comment on that if anything's done on Gateway Boulevard, you talk about an area that's vulnerable, that area is going to be gone. I mean, it's easy pickings to be able to do that road widening. Yeah.
All right. Hello, MB?
Stephen Blum.
Okay. Good afternoon. Today we have the third quarter, September 30th, financials and overview for you. That puts you 75% through the year with one quarter left to go. Kind of starting with your revenue, a lot of solid numbers to report. 99% of all your, your assessments have been collected through June. You can see here across the board, most of your revenue has actually exceeded your budget. Most of that is, is due to interest, which we'll kind of go over at the bottom of this page, but really good numbers to report in terms of your utility billing, you're at about 80%. So again, above what was budgeted and again, that's, you know, it's a good sign that we are basically been able to kind of maximize what we had budgeted and get the revenue in for assessments. Kind of looking at spending the other side of the equation here, when you look down there at the, kind of the midway through the, the page, you know, again, you know, 75% would be right on budget and you can see, except for a small amount on, for, for Stony Brook, the rest of them are running right now under budget and again, there's still a quarter left to go and there's certainly, you know, projects that are in the pipeline are being worked on, but you know, as far as where you are through the third quarter from spend, the spending side, it looks good. You know, it's kind of a below budget, what we would like to see. You can see the breakdown, we always will put the, you know, and they're right there, you can see kind of the breakdown of the spending and where it's occurring. Again, operations is about 37% of the total, the highest capital, but numbers look really good in terms of spending. And then as you go further down in the page is where we, we, you know, we've talked about interest before, but right now, and you can see the breakdown by funds, about 866,000 of interest has been generated for the first three quarters, again, with one quarter left to go. And you can see by funds, you know, like the general fund's got 193,000, Pelican Preserve 130, the enterprise fund 133,000 and then even the capital, which again, for the capital, we talked about that as well during the budget stuff in terms of that. It's all of this, this earnings, we're very conservative when we do the budget, so you know, any, any of this money that comes in certainly helps with future projects, other projects where there might be some expansion that needs to be done. It's just good to be able to maximize your resources and get some interest on it. Are we still maintaining your, your carryover amount? Obviously, we're now heading into the stretch run for 2025 and then we will calculate a new, a carryover amount for you and do the, basically the same thing, but all in all, you know, very solid numbers as we head into the final quarter.
Questions for Stephen?
Stephen, you were, have you been online the whole time?
I think I missed a couple minutes in the, in the first part of the workshop, but...
Missed the juicy part that Chelsea gave us, the early Christmas present of a 16% increase and a 12, 12, 12, 12, 12 increase from Lee County. We, we need to get your opinion looking at that. Those numbers are outlandish for just assessments that we're paying for unless we get some skin in the game. To what extent do we need to be asking somebody for documentation to justify those increases to a, I want to call it large volume user, a, what is it, bulk user? Is that what we're calling, bulk user? What is the advantage of being a bulk user if we're going to pick up the tab for every Tom, Dick and Harry's expenses?
Well, you know, in the past, they used to provide a, a nice breakdown, I mean, I say nice, but, but they used to provide a breakdown.
And I could be wrong, I've not looked at the agreement in a while. I also thought there's a formula in the back.
There was a formula.
It had to be utilized and they did and Rob Ward would always do that and then our original, and it happened to be the same rate consultant, Rappelis, for both the county and for the district. But I thought, and I haven't looked at that agreement in a while, but I thought there was a formula in the back.
There is, there is.
And I don't know if they've used that formula, if we need to ask them to verify and apply the formula to whatever numbers they've sent to Chelsea. So Chelsea, you can send Stephen, Bloom and I whatever communications you have from the county and whatever rate study they have.
And Tony, I think, as I recall, there was a breakdown for the plants versus the distribution and or collection system.
That's my recollection also. But I could be wrong. Stephen, you recall that?
Yep, I, I agree, we used to get that and then especially when they did the, the final true ups each year, they would provide...
Yes, that's when we saw it.
It's an attachment and it references, the agreement references the formula, the calculation.
Well, this has gotten serious. That's, in the next six years, we're talking 100% increase.
I've heard that anyway.
That's ridiculous.
I'll follow up.
No utility does that.
Tony, yes, I'll send you the communications. I do have the rate study from Rappelis that the county has provided, so I can, and if you'd like to read it too, I can send you that.
If you can send it to Stephen and after myself, then we'll have a follow-up next week about the agreement.
There hasn't been an amendment to that.
Bill.
We do pay, we do pay a percentage of the capital repairs for this treatment plan, but...
And we should.
The formula addresses.
Yeah.
That formula is long.
Oh, yeah.
We've already, we've already had our true up meeting with the county regarding last year's numbers and so we meet with them every year and anytime rates start to come up, Rich knows I call him up and say, what's going on?
See, where I have a problem, especially on sewer, on the sewer side, is that our collection system serves nobody else.
Oh, it's right.
So they have not, what, we, we do not use one single component of their sanitary sewer collection system to get the water into that treatment plant.
My understanding is your wastewater plant here services the airport, services probably next door, Thimmer Creek and others, and that was the whole reason for the, one of the biggest reasons the county wanted to acquire the site and the property was to help service the airport area, the commercial areas along Daniels and to avoid any zoning issues and everything else. That was part of the rationale at the time.
My point is, is that the distribution or the calculation of water versus sewer are totally different in that the treatment plant's located right here in the middle of our community, so we, we don't have to have our sewage go through anybody else's pipes, don't even touch them, nor does anybody else's come through our pipes. So that distribution or collection system should be totally not even on the books for calculation.
And that's part of what we...
I'll get the study.
We need to look at.
I'll get the study. I have it, I'll just, to you. All right, anything else for Stephen Bloom regarding the financial, quarter of the financial?
One question, I might be more appropriate for Laura than Stephen, but looking at the investment chart, investment by earnings, general fund 193, Pelican 130, is that what shows up in the '04 revised budget as investment interest?
In the budget? That's what we...
But in revised for budget, very first page for, for '01, says investment interest and for '26, we got 175,000.
That's what we project for next year. This is actuals.
Based on the actuals, yeah.
Okay, so the answer is yes. Based on where we are in three quarters of the year.
Yes.
We've made projections.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Stephen? Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, so, for the discussion?
Dr. Blum. Anybody have anything?
Anything more?
Anything more?
I don't.
Just, just get the capital stuff so that we know what we're looking at.
District manager items to report, monthly reports. They hate me. I didn't have anything. Public Works? Public Works?
Oh, I did have one, I'm sorry. The public, the monthly report, very first page.
For Public Works or for Laura?
I'm on page 422.
Okay, tell them what it is and I'll tell you what it's, yeah.
Well, it's a memorandum, it's, Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
Or June monthly report, yeah, Public Works. The very first item, the pond standard, any, any progress on that?
Yeah, actually this week, Stephanie's going to meet with...
Coming.
No, tomorrow. What's his name?
The Doug?
Peter.
Peter.
Doctor, Dr. Odette.
Yes, and then we're going to have to follow up internal conversation next week and we're going to try to get it on the next pond subcommittee meeting so they can take a first stab at it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And this is a district-wide policy?
Yes, ma'am.
With the aim of consolidating.
Yeah, we took the two and merged them together and then we're gonna, we hacked it, hacked at it and then Ponce is going to hack at it and then you're going to hack at it and then hopefully we'll have an updated...
Hack that.
Hacks, got it.
And on the Public Works Maintenance Page, it said the Public Reserve Boardwalk, the crews have installed the ADA compliant bowlers, yada, 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 and the reflective tape. The only comment I have on that is there used to be a sign on the Sienna entrance saying basically, if the boardwalk, you have to be ADA compliant to be on it, but I'd like to have that returned.
All right.
Whatever the right language would be for that.
Okay.
Because we haven't degraded it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll work on it.
Only thing I have for Paul is we're checking it out right now, but it's another good example when you're doing the storm projects. We had water backing up into the house over in the high rent district in Hampton Park and what we believe happened, the neighbor saw it, didn't say anything at the time, but a drain inlet, that went out into the lake, wasn't repaired, wasn't fixed and we're now trying to chase and find out where the water's coming, but that's why if they're going to, in the future...
Pipe was plugged.
No, what, what needs to be happening is that if we're doing this and when we're doing the plans, we annotate on the ASBILs that we plugged to line up, we won't have to be out doing a goose chase right now to find them, but it's another good example that there's never a dead pipe.
So we plugged it intentionally while we were doing so?
I imagine somebody looked at it and didn't think it served anything and for the last six months, it's been drier and you know what, and so that's been a problem. Well, now we're getting all this rain and the water's coming up in their lanai.
Gotcha.
And the lanai's tied into, I believe, a roof drain and the roof drain looks like it goes straight out to the lake and the neighbor said, well, they, there was a, like a bubble out there, but they didn't fix it. So I have a feeling somebody just thought it was inactive or dead, but we'll get that fixed, but...
Yes, there's been a lot of lessons learned, so we know what we need to do moving forward.
It happens all the time and then as much problems as we've had over in Gateway Greens on Pond 109, I'm hearing a lot of really good comments coming back about how the project finished up. It looks, looks fantastic.
He was scary when he did that, I was like, what?
The fences are built, yes, but everything else is done at the water level. Today's the first day the weir was cresting. Finally went over. So as much as there was, the belly aching, they, they all think it looks pretty nice now.
Ed, thanks for the segue. Paul and Stephanie have been working hard on, I won't call it a policy, I won't call Paul and Stephanie have been working hard on, I won't call it a policy, I won't call it a rule, because that's kind of up in the air right now, but kind of mirroring.
You're watching me.
Yeah, I know. Daggers. We've identified erosions directly due to downspouts, and so we're going to be coming in front of you with kind of a policy or a rule or some type of direction, kind of mirroring what Pelican has done with bubblers and tying in and things like that. So we'll be coming in front of you in the next meeting. I hate to be spending millions of dollars on these ponds and have.
Degreed four years later.
Washed out.
Yeah, and Chelsea, when I first saw the first iteration of it, I paused, but then.
You hacked it, it's okay.
But then I sent her an example from another community.
Yeah.
That the main operative difference is, and it was brought better in Pelican Preserve, as well as in each individual association in Gateway, because they had the association also actively involved in it. And it's a, it's a CDD down in Tiger County, but they had substantial problems with similar kind of issues. And so they adopted a policy that was very comprehensive, comparable to what Paul and Chelsea, Stephanie prepared, but it involved the association intimately involved working with the district. So I think there's a way to craft a similar document and get the buy-in.
So that's, that's one, Stephanie's identified a handful of large erosions that need to be repaired, and I hate to make the repair and not fix the underlying issue, so.
Who, who's that?
Villages of Stony Brook, right?
Yes, villages of Stony Brook.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll be bringing that back to you as a discussion here in the next, probably your next meeting, so. But anything else for Paul?
I don't have anything on the report, but I do just a few call-outs.
Sure.
If you can take a look at an oak tree that is on the corner of Griffin and Gateway Boulevard, address from 711. During that, during the roundabout project, it looked like it was going to die, it was pretty bad shape, I think we just need to.
I don't even know how that made it through construction.
Exactly, so I think we need to pull that one, that's one. Two, there's an area in front of Silver Lakes, and I think that's when we have to contact the county. The sidewalk is actually holding water for about four to five hours.
Okay.
There's, it's just, I mean, I don't know, I think it just needs to be pulled. There's nothing wrong with the sidewalk, but just the slope of it is backwards than drainage, yes. And then, do we know what Lee County is doing on the corner of Gateway Boulevard and Griffin? Will we have that camera? Because I noticed they had a both bucket truck there today.
I think they were just working on their, the signals, the crosswalk signals.
Got those electrical trucks there.
Because it was, it was Lee County staff.
It was, that's why I saw that with Lee County, I just wanted to know what it was.
They were working, when I came through, they were working on the.
Right, sure. Did that follow up, because that, was that where the electrical failure was July 4th afternoon? We had a two-hour outage, and they said it was a transformer right there at that intersection. Could that, did that get shorted out?
They wouldn't have touched.
Right, that would be, you know.
It was a switchgear.
That was what?
It was lined between switch gears for FPL. Yeah, but we had seven stations go down.
Yeah, everything went down around.
Anything else for Paul, Public Works?
No.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
And Mr. Shaw? Anything for Bill?
Are they having any issues with the sewer cleaning in the way of surprises? Have we found anything that, after 30 years, that was in there?
Anyone a body?
No real surprises. There's a couple things that we had inklings of, and they just reaffirmed.
Stoppages or blockages or what?
I and I.
Oh, infiltration.
Yeah.
Well, I'll flung you your left, but we found pallets.
Oh, I know, I mean, I've seen them online, because there was a lady living in the side of my end two weeks ago.
Nothing shocking in this.
They're not done yet.
They're not completed, but they're most of the way completed, so.
And they're just doing the gravity sewers right now, the.
Aren't they doing manholes then?
Yeah, the gravity.
And the manholes.
That's the gravity sewer, yes.
What zone are they in? Three or four?
They're all over the place, because it, they tied it to every master manhole and went out from there for a period, depending on the lift station. Some of them are only two manholes down at the south roundabout.
Have they found manholes that weren't at the surface? No surprise, big calls.
Well, we found the one.
You mean paved over it?
Other.
Buried manholes.
Yeah, so.
Like a street work.
Whatever, it could be under dirt, anything.
It was under the dirt.
Well, we found a couple over at.
The one at Fairway Lakes, we found when we had the issue earlier this year. They also have that noted in their print and plan to be assigned out of your number.
Cypress grew there. Well, they were, they were the ones who gave us a pretty significantly low price, unit price for doing this work. I was just wondering, were there any surprises that, change orders, extras or anything?
No, no surprises, they seem to be on track.
Really?
So, knock on wood. The manhole inspection portion is upcoming. We got an updated schedule today, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, so I don't know what that date is.
Oh, and did you see anything, or see anything, smell anything over on West Lakes on that sewer pump station?
I did not.
Did not? Okay. They've just been, was still, the day I was there, it was a block and a half, both directions of that station, and stuff.
Was it the one in Gateway Greens, or the one?
Gateway Greens, all West Lakes are off.
Yeah, the one on West Lakes and Gateway Greens, yes. No, but there was nothing.
All the rain and stuff, I haven't noticed anything the last couple of days, but about three weeks ago, it was, it's.
Yeah, so that coincided with the power outage, so maybe there was just buildup, so.
Oh, you've checked it, that's good.
Yeah.
I just have one quick question. How are we, what signage of all the lift stations? Are all lift stations have their numerical signs, or no?
They do not have them all installed.
Okay.
I have them, it's on our list of completing, so.
The ones at Pelican are all.
Pelican, yeah, I just had to send a few requests, and I just had to put location, but I wasn't sure if the sign fell, or, you know, because I know there are tie straps and rods, so.
Yeah, well, the ones with fences should, they should all be installed, so if something's missing with a fence.
Then it's preserved.
Then it'll preserve.
Well, we just needed the fence, that's why.
Yeah, leave it up to me to notice.
I'll have to check and make sure it got installed, it should have been installed. We also lost the one at Lift Station 13 in Stony Brook, somebody wanted it, I guess, because it said 13 on it.
Okay.
And they're all identified to GRS?
The lift stations?
Yeah.
Yes. One other thing with Bill, the odor control unit, the new odor control unit was installed at Stony Brook. They just started it up this week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, so they're coming, did they come out today, or are they coming back?
They are coming back, I don't have an exact schedule. Tom had sent an email, and I was in the process of responding when I thought I missed something because of lightning and lift stations going off. So I ran in here and didn't get a chance to finish up, but they told me that there is an acclimation period, so they would be back every couple of days for probably a week or so, dialing it in, so.
And we did ask them to keep the old one.
The old one is sitting in place and can be turned back on with just a switch. It got disconnected back.
Like a booster.
So, you know, because it was, it was managing, so if something with the new unit failed or is not working properly, we can engage the old one, and then once we have a significant time with the new one in place and it's working, then we'll worry about removing the old one.
And that same vendor is doing some readings where we paid that company before to come in and do an assessment. We paid them a substantial amount of money. The vendor is actually offering to do the, pretty much the same assessment that the gentleman did at Girl Scout, so he's put in a.
Well, he put a data logger in the wet well, so he'll read the data logger stuff, but Webster Environmental did external studies and collection of air and samples as well, so.
Something like Lutheran Church?
Yeah.
Did we just do that on problems, or have we done everything?
I'm sorry?
Just the two problem.
Just the problem.
Two problem children, yeah.
Yeah, so the commonality with those two stations is they both have four stations that pump to them. So I believe the agitation of the extra sewage from other places is the cause of, the root cause.
Anything else for Bill? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I have one additional thing to add before we move on.
I'll do that too.
Matt Dewitt from Wink News will be here next Tuesday to do weather, hurricane season preparedness in this boardroom, so tell your friends. And I don't know the time.
There was a blast that came out, I saw it on the.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, I'll see.
Just a quick question, are the lights at the roundabout in Griffin by the high school working? I know, we contacted them.
Streetlights?
Yeah.
We were told that they were working, but that's been a handful of weeks ago.
Okay, I'll check today.
Okay. All right, anything else for monthly reports? Next.
Do you want to add your goals and up for upcoming?
So you asked that I put together some goals for the next year, like last year, I try to do one per department, that way it can trickle down, so. Really, the big one that's changed, or the two that's changed, is the master irrigation system replacement for Public Works, and then for Laura's world, a human resources system. Right now it's kind of clunky, but we want to try to get something that's more universal, that we can do more than just payroll on, that we can do hearing reviews and evaluations and questionnaires, things like that, so.
And the whole HR hiring portion of it is a bajillion times better than what we have right now, so.
If you have any questions, or you see that those are, maybe I need to change them, please let me know, but that's my intent for this next two.
I don't have any, but, anything else?
No.
Looks like a smell, big plate.
Yeah, turkey platter.
All right.
All right.
So, Tony?
Again, part of what Randy was doing, and what the rest of the staff updating volunteer waivers, sort of reviewed what was out there. We researched case a lot, had one of our summer interns assist also, and updated and provided that to Randy. It's probably more lengthy than most people wanted, but it's also just one of those protective measures. Worked with Laura and Georgia and Chelsea and Russ on the notices and for the budget hearing and the assessment hearing, we got those out, probably you already saw two of them have been placed so far. We had the budget warning that came out Sunday, and the budget hearing and assessment resolution, the other one came out. Yes, you have a point.
Can I just pause real quick?
Yeah.
The letters went out this week, so just so you know, you might start to hear, your neighbors might start to call you.
What letters?
And it's not for cook.
Annual letters, the assessment letters that we send out every year.
They went out.
When assessments go up, you change purpose, you have to send out both the big map, the big ads twice, and the budget resolution that was plugged. The resolution was twice.
Yeah, didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted.
No, no, fine. The CUSI utility software, working with the vendor that wants to use their language in that very at all, so just been working with Chelsea and Laura and Leslie, and trying to get them to modify that, so we'll see how that proceeds. Honor of contract requirements, Chelsea, have you advised them?
No, I do, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So the low bidder, or the selected vendor that the board chose at your last meeting, could not meet the certificate of insurance requirements that was.
Would not, the district has additional insurer?
Yes, which, yeah.
It wouldn't meet our insurance requirements.
So.
Why? I've never heard that.
Yeah, so we gave them the opportunity to do it by a time and date certain, and told them that we would move on to the next vendor, so we are going with the higher of the two, the Grau and Associates, which.
There we go. Happy now, Ed?
Good things coming those ways.
To Bob's point, but what did they do? They require.
Never have anybody done it.
Yes, the requirement was.
It was in all the documents, required them, the district named as additional insurer on the comprehensive reliability, you know, all policies.
So I will say.
That's a lot of reading for them to do this, right?
So I will say that the, this vendor is asking for some leniency with some of the limits on the insurance, which we're going to have an internal discussion on, like, we require $2 million in professional liability, they're asking to only have a million. So we're going to talk through that and work through that, but that agreement with the second company will probably come back to you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Daniels Parkway Apartments, so Stephen, talk.
Do you have something?
I'm sorry. I have a limited concern about lowering insurance requirements.
When the.
When we excluded someone for, I mean, not the same thing, but I think we just need to think through that before we.
We need checks.
Yeah, we, we actually.
We have our checks.
We went with our insurance provider, for risk, and said, hey, for these different types of categories, what do you recommend? And being the conservative that he is, always went high. We have, I have administratively approved a reduction, I guess, in some of them, because the risk, I felt like the risk was not as, the reward and the risk give to kind of weigh those, about the additional costs.
Yeah, when we did, we worked on a matrix, I stumbled across somewhere, like I said, my theory is even a blind squirrel finds a nut every now and then. It was a great matrix that I found an entity created for insurance coverage. And so we worked with Laura and Chelsea on that and provided it to the district's consultant, and so we came up with a matrix, and that's what's in all the agreement. Differentiates contract values, vendor, type of work, services, and so they have some variations, particularly it's job-specific and vendor-specific. But that can be a discussion by the board, whether or not the professional negligence they want to come down on. And that's kind of interesting that they, that's a lower number for professional negligence. So the Daniels Parkway Apartments utility issue Stephen touched on, I've had good communications with Lance Chernow, the organization is transitioning to a different portion of the development, Daniels Parkway. I think we, from a staff level and a developed level, we're in consensus as to the terms of the utility outsizing agreement, and as to the temporary irrigation well agreement, we're about 99.5% there. So the plan is to bring it to the August 7th board meeting for the board to look at and review. Interestingly enough, in my conversations with Lance Chernow last time, they may be doing the project in two phases. I mean, they're planning on doing it as rental apartments, that's the concept now. And whether or not down the road, somebody converts it to a condominium form of ownership, that's, that's a different animal, but right now it's like two phases. So two different sort of operations. Stony Brook Roads and Streets were 99.95% there. I brought with me, we have the agreement to be signed with the, yeah, and this is the, this is, these are the exhibits.
It's raining, that's when the water, the planes.
And there are just, there are two items that we need from US Home, and one is, all we need to plug in is notice information, that paragraph, and then get the council for the US Home to bust language revisions that were made to the agreement in the form of deed and consent to conveyance that I'm comfortable with, district's comfortable with, Chelsea and Laura, and the HOA and Katie, Brooke and their council are comfortable with. And I need, there's like four exhibits or little nits I need to correct. But what I'd like to do, since the board approved it substantially final form, and it's not been substantially modified since then, it's been sort of cleanup language. I have it here for the chair to sign, so we can hang, and take it back and hang on to it. We'll get it to Katie to have the HOA sign, officially hold it until US Home, so we're very close.
Okay.
So that's very positive.
So what is the closing date?
July 31st.
Well, so we're shooting for July 31st, or there's another alternative date.
No, we're not on our table.
No, I understand, but that's.
It was too fast.
But the agreement provides for an alternative date after certain events. So we're very, everybody wants this to take place, so it's very good, appreciate it.
Except the attorneys, they weren't thinking for it. I'm just kidding.
No, Kate. I really appreciate the help by Laura and Chelsea on this, as far as numbers and status of things, very, very helpful. And also making sure everything's within the box of what they need.
Laura, given, given that it closes on July 31st, and it's now over, we, you are not including anything in the budget for next year for Stony Brook.
Yep.
And they will or will not be able to use all their assets.
They have until September 30th to expend the remaining funds per year.
September 30th.
This year, yep, but they are not assessed, there is no O04 fund, which is Stony Brook, in the budget for fiscal '26.
Okay, but are they going to be able to meet this September 30th?
Yes, I'm worried that they're gonna, they're gonna run all the funds. It's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, that's part of the conversation they have with Laura and Chelsea.
What you asked.
If you noticed earlier, Stephen Bloom called out Stony Brook as being at 77%, we're supposed to be at 75, that's why.
And it's actually higher than that, because his numbers don't include the month that's in covered in POs, so, yeah, they're burning through it. Okay. And I'm watching it very closely.
And it's a very good cooperative venture too, it really has, which is always nice.
It has, it really has.
Yes.
I'm saying.
Might be different.
A big change, what is to Stony Brook, I'm going to say that, big change.
Yeah, and Santa Luis I was working on today, and as Stephen mentioned, it just, putting together a more detailed letter to Kelly Price, going through the history of where, how we got to where we are today. Chelsea's obtained a quote for the work to clean it up from extreme divers, and it's $85,000 to do it now. And so what I'm doing is a letter to Kelly Price, I'll circulate it to you all tomorrow, that goes through the history of where we started, the opportunities we gave them, and this is causing significant problems to the district, and they need to either fix it, or to fix it and go after it.
No, the 85 doesn't include the drain, downspouts.
I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
I don't. Just to hope not, I don't know.
And I did file a formal complaint with Lee County Code Enforcement against Lenai regarding this issue. They're pursuing it out through their path.
Yeah, I'm just as frustrated, and all frustrated as you, that they had plenty of opportunity during the dry season last year.
The dry season, you had to go out there and almost, just like you did on 109. 109 was done in the dirt. That one could have been. That one could have been done too.
Yeah, so I'll circulate that to Chelsea, we'll report back to the board for next meeting and then come back to the budget we need to do for our litigation. Sunshine Law PowerPoint video, Chelsea had a good idea that we have a PowerPoint presentation, Sunshine Law, public records office committees. We're going to create one that has like a voiceover also.
Will this take the place of that deal we have to sit through for hours?
No, you gotta do that too.
I, I, I did that.
You did?
Yeah, I sent it, I sent it to you.
I'm in the middle of it.
Are you sure you sent it to me?
Thirty percent.
Now, this is one that.
Fever's.
You got to December.
This is one that can be presented to the subcommittees or committees as a refresher without us having to make the review or we could be removed.
Painful.
But it's sort of like, once you're all updated, as appropriate. The next one, yeah, the irrigation that's on hold, I'm still not sure what's going on in Pelican Reserve, Bob, Carol, that's still on hold, the irrigation.
They're not moving them.
They're fine. Yeah, the storage tank, Chelsea just reported that we may get a good lawsuit since February, we gave it to them. Okay, I'm looking at it. The Chamber lawsuit, I've heard nothing more from the Defense Council that we've been working with and always good to work with. I'm ready to wrap up my Tetra Tech review for the C D B G. Gateway Greens Master Association, one of our staff is very good at graphics and so as opposed to, I want to make sure that the exhibit's correct that, you know, for the crosshatching of these man areas, that we will have these instead of being assigned. We had sort of a crosshatching, we did that hand, but we have, one of our staff is good at graphics, she has a graphic computer, graphics monitor, so, and we're going to, yeah, wrap that up and give that to Mark and make sure we're all on the same page. I want to get their recording in the next two weeks to put that to bed. Now that it's sent to Mark, I want to wait for that. The rest are basically ongoing as we go on. Does the board have any questions? Oh, and, and with regards to Town Lakes, I haven't yet finished the bullet points, I need to get those, to get those out to the residents.
I called him, I left him messages as he called you and returned my call.
And we haven't found out anybody else, right?
My research showed he looked in at Lexis Nexis and we turned.
So, there, I know, I know the warm bodies.
All right. I have a question for Tony.
Yes.
Tony, if, if we have an asset, and I'm speaking about the monuments that are at Tree Line and Colonial on both sides, those are such unique properties, I mean, it's possible nobody's even interested in them. Is there a way of putting something out there to the, to the commercial real estate world that we have these two properties and, you know, without going through all the formal stuff of declaring it surplus and then doing a, you know, doing all of that stuff?
We still have to declare it surplus, but I think.
No, but I mean, if there was even interest.
Well, I think what might be helpful is recognizing that commercial developers like to squeeze every square inch out of everything and also like to put their signage in many places that can to attract business. I would submit, you know, probably those, those shopping center developers or their tenants, they want it or someone may want to have additional parking or do an additional feature.
Parking would be.
You never know, maybe they can modify the site plan for another outfielding. Nowadays, it's amazing because you see all these smaller drive-through coffee places and everything else going up on postage stamp sized parcels. It's like a Tide, a Tide cleaner.
I think, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Carol, I think what she's asking is, can we, can we put feelers out without doing any formal declaration of surplus?
We need to do that, I think, I thought the board already did that.
Can.
Well, Peacock discussed it, but then there was differences as to whether they wanted to do it or not and who would even be interested in it and how much of a price do you put on it? There were, there are so many things that have been, honestly, a couple of times when I've gone past it now, I mean, who would buy it? What, what can you put on half?
First, you just, before you go on that, just you need to find a, a commercial broker.
Yes.
And start there, have them do just a, a desk assessment or kick some tires, put some feelers out, and then he'll tell you whether it's.
That's what she's.
There's any benefit.
How do you start it? Yeah, yeah.
So, is it possible to ask Tony to send out such a letter to the?
No, no, I didn't.
Well, we, we dealt with some commercial brokers before, Chelsea, and Chelsea has some, like, maybe Danny Grimes does many residential, I'm correct?
Yeah.
Might be some others, but you'd be surprised aside from, that is an excellent idea, a commercial broker. What developers or propertors, when they see a corner piece like that on a six lane, it could be an eight line highway in the future, that the value of that, to that visibility, and again, you have whatever the situation is on those two development parcels from a shopping center perspective.
Okay, so Tony, how can we put out feelers without doing anything busted?
Uh, like I said, just.
Without costing money.
Yes, thank you.
The key is trying to not have to sign in for a commission because that's the whole thing. Once you contact a broker, they may argue later on that they're procuring cause and want to get a commission for that. So, that's one thing, if you just want to retain a broker now, a commercial broker.
No, no.
If you sit on this to the next meeting, let me put some feelers out.
I want to kind of put out feelers to the community without.
Yeah, let's sit on it, let's, let me submit, put some feelers out and then come back to the next meeting.
Okay, without inferring any liability, that's for the broker.
Okay, thank you.
But again, if you get it off, that's, we, I think we want to who, but we don't know what they.
Could, could somebody that owns that parcel or those two parcels buy it and use it for advertisement?
Well, what I was saying, it.
These are a prohibition.
Well, that's exactly what I.
Well, it's in the Pelican.
We have two billboards right there, ten thousand dollars a month.
It's in the Pelican, it's subject to Pelican Reserve's special requirement or regulations, it's part of that. And so, whatever.
We like that now.
Yeah, whatever.
I like the idea of making money, I know.
Yeah, there are listed, there are listed uses in there and whether or not there could be a standalone sign that the district could still own and maintain and rent out to somebody else for marketing purposes, I, I could look at that for that purchase. Whether or not the property owners there would buy it, the owner of the center, assuming that it's one big owner and there's just, they're different parcels.
Yes, every side of the street, I think there's two, one on each side.
Well, not, but then again, that property owner or somebody adjacent to that may want to buy it and then somehow do a redevelopment of that area, either put some other use in there, like I said, drive-through Starbucks, drive-through car washes, drive-through Tide cleaners.
Peacock has started the process of ball.
Tony, I don't really care what they, they put there, I just want to make some money.
No, I understand. Well, and that gets, that gets back into the, before the district would sell it, I always suggest you get an evaluation or an appraisal of it.
We did.
Yeah, well, current value, just so you at least have a minimum value to set.
Let's do this. So, let's go and put some feelers out, I'll reach out to an advertising billboard company and just say, hey, what are your, what would be your thoughts on this? And we'll, we'll close report back.
And, you know, look at the S D, I'll, I'll look at the S D requirements in the meantime.
I don't, I don't think people are going to like it to be a billboard, I don't think that.
It's what property rights are for.
Do what?
It's what property rights are for.
They can buy the property, do whatever they want to.
We don't know what.
It's on a major intersection, you know.
I can see where those, the two owners of those.
What's next?
Could make some advantage there.
Tony, anything else for Tony?
Nope, nothing else.
Anything else for Tony?
Nope. He answered, San Luis.
Jennifer, answer that.
All right. Anything else for Chelsea and Jennifer?
List is one line, so, go.
I hear none. All right, supervise the comment, I'll start with Carol.
Come on.
Yeah, this was, I don't know if it's totally a C D D issue, but we had a real problem going on at Gateway Greens relative to storm sewer, correct, storm sewer, stepped on the brake, hurricane shutters. Hurricane shutters, and we're seeing a lot of stuff coming out of Lee County Fire Department. They wouldn't be able to ban owners of homes putting in, bringing up storm shutters where there's no storm because it's dangerous for firemen going in and they get trapped in.
There's a county, a county ordinance.
There's a movement going that way. Well, it's in our covenants and we're getting ready to enforce it and figuring that the wrath of God is going to come from the fifty percent of the owners that are up north that they put theirs up because they don't want to have to deal with it. And it's going to be a nightmare. My ideal was, is any, any other associations heard to have any issues on this or do you allow people to board up their houses for months at a time?
We don't.
We do.
Pelican does? So, people can board them up?
I think we.
I don't think you guys allow it.
I don't allow it and.
You're bad.
I know. All right.
I think the only time we've done it is if there was a threat and it was approved by the, the H O A that you can now put up your shutters and, and then once you do, then they'll let, they'll, they'll let us say.
We haven't extended, you know, we have extended the, the time, like for, for residents, but yeah, but we didn't want to do that. But I think that's a requirement, the statute was here, right, so it's going to require you to put something out.
Yeah, the county, the, the fire department, they're going to do something and they want it banned. And I see their point in doing it, the problem is you've got these people with their seasonal, they, they.
They're gone, they're not going to put them up in July, they can take them down in August, they'll put them up in September.
And it's.
I mean, you think when you guideline, did they say the clear ones that are okay, you know, just don't put plywood and that would not be okay, so you, you can do that.
We got a nightmare.
All right.
Wish it would go away.
I'm going to have a discussion with Chelsea afterwards on the time sheets, because I've still got some examples of, of where the time sheets are being allocated. Up to fifteen minute increments, didn't seem bad, so we'll do that. I enjoyed the bi-monthly letter, that was very nice when that came out, kudos to whoever did.
Randy.
Well done. And have we gotten any microphone comments of it's better or worse?
Right.
First meeting.
Yeah, it's the first meeting.
Anybody signed in and said it's good, and then we usually say we can't even tell.
We had some technical issues, but we're on work through that.
They'll be here on Tuesday and do a little tweaking.
They'll call it, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know, Bob, do you want to bring up the whole communications thing or?
No, Carol's.
All right.
We'll go. Take care. All right. Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
Oh, sorry.
Kind of good for the rain.
No, I know, I know, I wasn't over there, I don't have anything else.
Okay, I moved to your.
Did you get a second? Head or gavel.
She moved in a second. Ready, break.